Is there? We're taking action in land bank. Does that matter?
I'm pulling up the agenda just to see if that's okay.
Wendy, are you able to hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
We're still waiting on, I guess, technology. I think we should acknowledge librarian Wendy Molton as our also assistant IT director. Assistant city attorney. Thank you for your help.
You have to get a new iron for all those badges you're gonna put on your jacket. We will now resume our regular meeting from executive session. No action was taken. Before we jump in, city attorney Martin, would you like to opine on? Are you prepared?
Yes, I was asked if we could bump the study session meeting up to immediately follow this meeting and bump the land bank meeting towards the tail end. And I'm fine with that. I think that's appropriate.
Readjust my stack. Okay, so our next item is nine A city manager's report. City manager Marsh.
Commissioners, we were notified today that the BNSF railroad will be closing their crossing on Buckeye Street slash K fifteen in Abilene to make an emergency repair to a defect within their crossing. Crossing will be closed tomorrow from eight AM to five PM. And if they get done sooner than they'll open then. The city has submitted a reimbursement request for the snow event from January four to six of this year. A big thanks to Shayla for heading that up and getting it submitted to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. Thank you also to department heads that assisted in getting assisted her in getting all the information gathered.
Okay, our next item is consideration of a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Well, second? Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned. I will now call to order the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Study Session. Our first item is two A emergency shelter housing plan Kat McKee with the Quality of Life Coalition. And since I said your name and title, I don't know that you need to say anything when you come up, but.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm here today to discuss with you the establishment of an emergency shelter for the residents of Abilene. Currently, we have them in other communities in this county, but Abilene does not have one. Hopefully, you all got the copy of my proposal earlier today. And then I've been working pretty closely with Cindy Whittington on this project. Because she is the one that people have been going to when things go bad. So before this last big storm that came in the first of January, she had people calling her, asking her questions of where they are to go, if their heat goes out, if the water line breaks, if they know somebody that's homeless that will be out in the elements, where is there someplace in the city of Abilene? And at that time, there was nothing that Cindy or I could find. After speaking with Ron, we found out that the Parks and Rec is set up as an emergency shelter, and so is the Senior Citizen Center. What we would like to do is to create a committee of city employees and local nonprofits and volunteers that could work on this and come up with a formal presentation for the city commission to approve the existence of an emergency shelter, of the ways to communicate and notify city residents of its existence. We need to know where to get the supplies, where to keep them stocked, work with the the public works to see how we can get these facilities on a generator. We've been talking, but we have done nothing formally. So what we're doing today is making you aware and hoping that you will encourage us to go ahead and make this committee, whether it needs to be official through the city, or whether it can be something that the quality of life does and creates a coalition. We just need direction from you. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Kat?
Yeah, I was just curious if you're aware of other communities that have something like this and like a model for you to use.
Yes, Cindy was working with Junction City and they sent us their their rules and what they require for their emergency shelter. And Ron and John Holgren attended a session that they were kind enough to share with us at the what was that? The Emergency Preparedness Activity Update Debrief? Yeah. So we have, but this is this is more for a a permanent shelter, not an emergency shelter. But it has really, really good information. So based on on these criteria, Manhattan has a warming shelter. There are several communities around that have policies and procedures. And Luke, I can't tell you Luke's name, but he's with the Salvation Army over in Salina, has offered to help us and assist us and even offer training if we would like it.
From the city's perspective, I guess, what would be the best outcome from us for for you to move forward with that?
I think the best outcome is to have your support for this committee to come up with a plan using what you already have in place. And then hopefully, we can find some grant funds to then pay for the upgrades that might be need to be done to the building so that we can plug in a generator at either location. Didn't you tell me you have something kind of for the twenty twenty six budget?
What we'll do is, since we do not have emergency hookups or temporary hookups for generators, either the senior center or the rec center, we would plug into the twenty twenty six budget that funds or the funding to get those installed.
And we could also explore grant funding in the meantime?
Absolutely. Talking with Kat, she can she can explore grant funding. So if we put it in there as a placeholder, we don't necessarily have to use it. You know, we could just.
Is there, I guess, from anybody? Is there a preferred locations? We've got senior center and rec center. Just logistically, I think that'd be something good for the committee to decide and for us to talk about because.
I think the rec center would be preferred because it does have showers. It does have kitchen stuff, and so does the senior center, but the senior center does not have as big a space. At the rec center, you can actually put down dividers like for the basketball games and have a women's side and a men's side and a family side and, you know, sides with pets. These are the all the kind of things that you have to think about when you're opening it up. And then hopefully, we can work with the Parks and Rec to see if there is a place that we could store potential emergency supplies like canned goods and water and first aid equipment and blankets and those kind of things. The county is looking at Sterling Hall, but we need to have something for specifically for the residents of Abilene. Because there was one in Harrington, there was one in Chapman, there was one in Solomon. We just need a place that we can designate and get the information out so that the community knows that if we're in a low temperature emergency or a flood emergency or a tornado or another snowstorm, that there is a place that they can go that is prepared to handle multiple families.
Kat, do you know what the capacity is at the rec center? I know that it would probably depend, like having people sleep there is different than attending a basketball game.
Right. And I don't know that. And that would be something that we would have to have the state probably come in or the fire marshal.
But you are correct, depending on what you're using off.
Yeah. Yeah, because you're gonna have cots and that kind of thing. So I'm sure that, you know, based on that information, the occupancy is going to be lower than what is posted.
Sure.
But we would like permission to work with everybody to set up an official committee to seek grant funds and just keep you in the loop on what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask is what's gonna enable you to best equip that? And then you have official committee, just like what we have with the ball fields that kind of expressly shows the commission's support and that these are the people on the committee. So if people in the community have questions about it, then they can reach out to those members of that committee.
Yeah, so it would be nice to have one of our commissioners and Mr. Marsh and Kale and, you know, several other city employees that might maybe even legal, at least at some point, come in and either talk about things that we need to be aware of. Just so that we do this according to law.
And then it sounds like the outcome. This all works out well. The outcome is there's a clearly outlined plan and we've clearly identified where there's potential capital needs to fully serve the purpose of what we find. So that sounds, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, yes. We just, I guess, are wanting to be create a partnership with the city to make this happen.
I'm not aware myself of a board or a committee that that would naturally fall under. I don't know if any of you guys have any ideas if there's an existing.
There's not. We could just, what we could do is just create a similar to what we did with the sports complex and the comprehensive plan just committed. Excuse me, create an ad hoc committee by resolution. We've done that in the past. So and then we could, I think you and I just need to talk and figure out who we want on that committee and we bring those names to the commission in a resolution and then
Okay.
Yeah. Make it make it official.
And thanks for explaining the clarification with sterile hall too. So it sounds like the distinction there is because that's a county.
That is a county.
Sort of thing.
Yeah.
Because I remember back during COVID, they got $200,000 to put showers and everything in there to serve as an emergency shelter.
Wonderful, but it is it is actually owned by the county.
Right.
So we can work with the county. But but if we can find something in the meantime, because you've already got two designated places, we just need to bring them up to code. We need to get them able to be run by generators. We need to make sure they have the supplies that are necessary and that we are doing things by the book.
Well, thank you for bringing this. Do we have any other, I guess, questions while Kat is here? I think we've kind of got a a good path forward. At least we'll start on the ad hoc committee and get that rolling so we can at least make some progress. Is there anything else that anybody can think of?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, as kids in crisis, you might be a great representative from the sorry and volunteering you.
That's okay.
You just got voluntold.
Is there a timeline you have in mind? I mean, would you like?
I would like to have it done within a year since we already have them in place.
To back up just a step, when would you like to have a committee? I mean, if we were gonna pass a resolution to create that committee, what would be a good timeline for us to?
We can have a study session next meeting.
It's been great for the committee to know capital costs and things like that as we pursue grants, but then as we're entering into budget season for fiscal year twenty six, then.
Okay. Yeah. Ron and I will get Mr. Marsh and I will get together and we'll we'll hammer some things out and have them ready for you next time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I would now consider a motion to adjourn.
They moved?
Second?
Motion has been moved and seconded. If there are any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned. I will now call to order the City of Abilene, Kansas Land Bank Board of Trustees meeting. Shayla, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Mr. Koloff?
Present.
Commissioner Witt?
Present.
Mr. Meisenberg?
Yes.
Roll call is complete.
Thank you. And then on our consent agenda, it is the approval of today's agenda as well as the meeting minutes from our last meeting on December ninth of twenty twenty four.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
And all second?
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff? Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is public comments and communications. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission, not on our current land bank Board of Trustees meeting agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move into old new business item six, a development agreement discussion for Cedar Ridge Properties, City Manager Marsh.
Really, commissioners, this is up to you guys. We had talked about having a development agreement for a total of three properties that the city owns, three normal residential sized properties that the city owns in Cedar Ridge. We actually have the fourth one, but it's a rather large one that we can talk about also. But as far as these three residential lots, I don't know. I talk my talking with city attorney. I don't know that we need a development agreement. Maybe we could just treat them as a case by case basis for each one. Although I think we need to have rules for the specials and determine distinctly what we want to do as far as the special special assessments, both the back or the overdue and the current remaining specials. So.
And we did have a fairly lengthy discussion on this. Aaron, would you be willing to give kind of a synopsis of that?
Sure. Well, we had talked about developing a template agreement for the sale of these lots to prospective future owners that kind of followed along the lines of what we did at the other development side, drawing a blank, Golden Belt Heights, where we sold individual lots for $7,500 and rebated 2,500 if they built a residence as promised. And we talked about that and I somewhat intended to work on that and have it back to you, but I believe Commissioner Koloff raised the issue and shared it with me, but there are covenants out there. Covenants, conditions and restrictions for Cedar Ridge Estates LLC. As commonly occurs in new residential developments, they impose certain architectural standards and appoint an architectural committee. As far as I can tell, there are no HOA dues or anything like that. It's just some reasonable standards for the development of the fifteen total lots out there. And one of the things we would have done in the development agreement is impose a requirement that you build a residence and that it meets certain basic architectural criteria. The covenants do that. And again, I was not aware of these. They were not referenced on the title insurance commitment, as I might have expected, but having looked through them, I think they may address and already require what you would have imposed as minimum requirements to anyone buying a lot. They don't require anybody to absolutely build something, but if you are going to build something, it must be a single family residence or a multifamily residence that meets certain basic criteria. And one of the lots, although it's zoned residential, as I understand it, is referred in these covenants is referred to in these covenants as the commercial lot. And these covenants require that some non-residential structure and use beyond that commercial lot. So there wasn't necessarily a one size fits all development agreement that could have been applied to all three lots. And it seemed like since we only have two lots that are intended for residential development, those could be dealt with possible in a case by case basis, knowing that if anybody does build there, they'll have to comply with these covenants. And then the other one is just a commercial use. The declarant is the person who records these covenants, and that was Cedar Ridge Estates. Under the covenants, it provides that these covenants can be terminated or amended by the declarant until at least ninety percent of the lots have been sold by the declarant to third parties. So I think it would be possible to retroactively go back and take an assignment of the declarant's rights if that were of interest and step into the declarant's shoes because they still have that right. They haven't relinquished that role and technically, whether Mr. Reynolds knows it or not, he's still on the architectural committee out there. And he might be willing to relinquish that. That would then enable the city, if it wanted to, to amend these declarations. Alternatively, there is a rule that at any time upon a seventy five percent vote of all lots, they can be freely amended as well. So I think taking into account our ownership, we would need nine other owners to favorably vote for any amendment or termination if there were a desire to terminate these covenants. Make these properties no longer subject to them. So we wanted to bring that to your attention because I did think it kind of changed the analysis of what we talked about at the last meeting.
There's a couple of things I wanted to clarify. It says we own, I'm pulling up the county site here, that we own four sites. Obviously, there's the large one in the back. We're not really talking about that. But there's only three listed on this document here. Was there another one?
That was when I think the partnership split and the city, the land bank acquired.
It was when. It's the frontage at ninth. Okay.
I think it was that and Kelly Dunn.
Got it.
Separated.
That was before even I was on the commission.
We were in high school.
Yeah.
So it's basically three residential lots plus the larger. That's a 1.56 acre parcel, which may have been discussed to potentially be commercial. The, I think I heard someone say fifteen lots. Did I misunderstand that?
I said that, yes. I'm reviewing the covenants and I counted fifteen lots.
There's, again, this is just my off back of the napkin count here, but I think there's twenty four either parcels or homes. And I don't know that I counted the 1.56 acre one in that, but there's as you kind of look at that, there's eight in the middle. And then there's eight on the west side of landmark, as it were. And then the duplexes, I'm not sure if those are one or two lots, if they how those vote, but then there's two more on the south side.
The duplexes could all be on individual lots. At least you look at the very last page or maybe second or third, the last page of the covenants, it describes the real estate that is subject to the covenants. And that's all I'm going off of. And I could have miscounted, but I counted fifteen lots. And that probably includes some duplexes. So there's probably more than fifteen. It could be more than fifteen homes.
Yeah, I guess, but to that point, I'm not sure that we, again, does it include that 1.56 acre that they've contemplated as commercial? That's block six, lot five. At least as it's shown in our notes here.
Yes. Yes, that all of block six is subject to these covenants.
There's there's twenty five parcels right now, but I would guess that just kind of looking at the way this is set up, maybe I'm not sure if those duplexes originally contemplated as one or two.
There it's possible there could be more than fifteen lots. As I look at this, it describes all the blocks and then the lots within those blocks. But when it comes to block six, it just says block six. So if there are multiple lots within block six, that may be what you're looking at. Those are not specifically enumerated on this legal description that I'm looking at. But in any event, I would say that, you know, we do we do own four and I only mentioned the number of lots. Maybe it's relevant, but because that would establish the threshold for which it takes to amend the covenants if there's a desire to do that.
Or that could relinquish those rights over to the city on those lots.
I believe so, yes.
I think that would be the easiest bet.
I think they've already got a pretty good standard out there, and I don't know that we want to deviate too much from that. Like I could seize maybe some technical reasons that we would want to have control of that. But I mean, there's eighty five percent of those lots have already been sold to private individuals.
Yeah, I think my my only will, I think they already have good covenants and I think it's a pretty the neighborhood looks good together. I mean, they've they followed that. But I think that would, if we were able to get him to relinquish those rights as what was it executor? There's a different term, I think.
Declarant.
Declarant, there we go. Then we would be able to implement some requirements on, we discussed it two weeks ago on that occupancy certificate. That way, if somebody is trying to buy a lot just for the lot, those specials would be that could then be re-amortized and assessed on that lot if they're not actually planning to build something on the on that said lot. But I think that allows us to add that to the covenants on our lots that we own, correct?
Yes, I think that that is accurate. We we probably don't need to be the declarant in order to add conditions to any sale. I mean, if we we can sell on whatever terms we want, those four lots we have. But if we want something more than what is already in the declarations, we would need to do that in our sale contract or development agreement, whatever we end up doing with the buyer. The the one benefit of maybe obtaining a transfer or an assignment of the declarant's rights would be that we no longer have to interface with the developer, who I understand has told us he's kind of getting out of it and no longer wishes to be involved. So that's probably consistent with his wishes anyway, and it would remove one party that would otherwise technically be required to be involved in any development out there.
Okay. And you may have said it already, but do those declarations, do they govern that commercial lot as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And clarification on the commercial lot, it's in the covenants and restrictions, it outlines that it's supposed to be commercial, but right now it's zoned as residential?
It's zoned as residential R three, but the deck or the covenants dictate that it can be used in a commercial sense if rezoned or commercial purpose have resigned. That's how I read those CCRs correctly.
Okay.
We did talk about this in a little bit of depth already, but I guess my wish is that we are still collecting those specials going forward. And I think we can still put those out on thirty years. I mean, with the residential lots, I'm not sure on the lot that we acquired previous to this transaction. How much is kind of pending on that? But I think looking at this just for I guess it depends on how you want to look at that. So if it's thirty years, just for the remaining balance due, I'm not sure that I'm reading this correctly, but it says I'm not sure the specials and Ad Valorm are broken down. I guess I'm fine with forgiving the Ad Valorm taxes, but I'd like to recapture the specials.
That's already been done by action of the land bank acquiring.
Yeah, we can't, the Ad Valorm taxes have already been wiped clean.
Right, I understand that, but the specials we do have.
Correct.
We can re-amortize those.
For instance, on block four, lot one, there's a remaining of ninety two hundred in specials between now and the end of the term, which is twenty twenty eight. The past due is ten thousand five or seven fifty seven. So
Right.
A total of almost twenty thousand between the past and the what's going to be due in the next four or five years or three to four years is about twenty thousand.
Just on that lot.
Just on that lot, yes.
I think I pulled this up last meeting. I don't know if you, do you guys know what the other homeowners are paying for specials on the residential parcels?
I know. I know I've looked it up, but I.
You can probably approximate it just based off of what's due here.
I think it's like twelve. I think it's like twelve hundred bucks a year.
I think if you take that one lot, fifteen thousand that was paid between two thousand nine, two thousand seventeen divided by that number of years, that's roughly what they're paying.
Yeah, so I guess I don't know that it's unreasonable to have six hundred dollars worth of specials. If y'all are amenable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with re-amortizing to spread that out. The question is, do we want to in the sale price of the property, wherever we set that sale price, does that offset some of those specials or, or do we just have the sale price set lows, the property moves, so then, so then we start acquiring those specials faster? That's, that's kind of the knobs I was looking at. I don't really have a preference either way. It's just, I don't know, it's a matter of approach to what I want to happen is whatever we do leads to the properties getting acquired and leads to somebody building on them. That's, that's what I hope to happen. So incentivizing that in the, the best way is, is what I want to do.
And that was one reason I really like that, that completion certificate. If you do provide that, you would get the specials waived, but also.
Yeah, I don't know. That's complicated, more complicated than
I know.
Rebating a, a sale.
I guess you would just hope that if someone was going to buy a lot out there and there's specials on it, they're probably not going to buy it and just sit on it. And we can, I guess if they want to, we still get our specials, but doesn't, doesn't do anything going forward for us really, but.
So what do you think of that on, on what we would set the sale price of the lots and does that offset any of these specials?
Well, I think with the Golden Belt Heights, we've already created what at least local developers have told us is an artificial economy. We depress the prices of lots so low that they can't sell anything, which may or may not be true, but I would say I, I think that that argument has some merit. I think if you go to let's say Salina, which has a fairly robust housing market, you're not going to buy a lot for seventy five hundred or probably twenty thousand dollars. I don't know, we, we kind of are driving the price on it. So I don't know that I don't know there's anything that we can do that's fair. I mean, you were talking about fairness earlier. Whatever we do is going to be unfair to someone. I think it's unfair to the people who live in the properties now that their neighbors can move in and not pay any specials. They're getting essentially all of the benefit without picking up any of the tab. And at the same time, our taxpayers are picking up the tab. Everybody's picking it up. They're picking it up. There's and someone else's. I don't, I'm, I don't see any reason why we'd change the price dramatically from what is out at Golden Belt Heights. And I think, I don't know.
Yeah, if we do mirror that seventy five hundred dollar purchase price and then twenty five hundred dollar rebate when the completion certificate or occupancy certificate, neither one is received. So they do get a little bit of a benefit to construct a house. I mean, twenty five hundred dollars to construct a house isn't a huge benefit, but.
Well, I mean, I think if you look at Junction City is, I guess, another place that has had a land bank that has sold lots. I mean, and essentially what's happened is not too terribly different from what's happened at the Golden Belt Heights, and that is the builder recaptures that delta for the market price of a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, the land price is built into that. Normally it's twenty, twenty five thousand dollars. They're essentially just keeping that as margin. So I don't, I mean, it's, it's a choice for us. It's not, it's not a fun one.
And so what I'm hearing is we maybe, yeah, stick with that seventy five hundred dollar purchase price with a twenty five hundred dollar rebate if the CEO is issued and then re-amortize the specials over for twenty or thirty year term?
I think it's fine to do thirty. I mean, from the city's perspective, we've been eating it.
They can always pay them off early if they like.
I'm just thinking out loud here, would
I, I do have a question. Would we re-amortize the entire development or just the lots that we own?
We can only do the ones we own, I think. We, I don't think, I mean, we can do whatever we want on the financing side, but as far as the, we can only hold out the due date essentially on those specials for the lots that we own.
I think that's
My preference would be, yeah, just to touch the land bank ones.
Yeah, I don't want to muddy the waters anymore.
Even if we could do the other ones, I don't necessarily want to do that.
Yeah, I would, you know, we're operating under the land bank statute, which tells us what we can do with properties owned by the land bank. I'd want to probably check with Dominic Eck because those were issued in relation to geo bonds that are repayable and are tied to special assessments. So I'd want to check before we start affecting any of the other special assessment amortizations.
I don't have any appetite to touch the other ones.
No, I don't either.
Are there any other delinquencies out there?
I think the only delinquencies are on these Cedar Ridge were the ones that were the Cedar Ridge. I think the rest of them were good.
They had more at the last tax sale, but some of those were bought, so.
Although some of them that were on the tax sale, the past due specials were not collected on them.
Correct. I guess that's what I'm getting at. We have, I believe, not property taxes, specials, we have some that are still outstanding, if I'm not mistaken. And we'd have to go back and check. We'll go back and double check.
So those are still due, those are the ones that sold at sheriff's sale. Those taxes are still, the specials are still due.
Correct.
It was only the ad valorem that are washed away at that point.
I don't think that's accurate.
For those acquired by the land bank. What's, what you guys are talking about, it sounds like there's personal property ownership where they acquired them at a sheriff's sale.
Correct. There's a
I think I've got it here.
There's, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna say it. I'm pretty sure there's a lot out there that was acquired in a land sale that it still has back specials on it. I, whatever they have paid for it will go towards their property taxes. And I guess the county would have wiped, taken care of that at, you know, at payment, so.
I'm looking at a lot that's owned by Home Sherpa. Does that sound like something familiar?
So I guess, Aaron, what, what sort of direction do you need? I think we, the pricing wise, I think we're at that. If we were to implement it, I guess, do you need direction on the what we do with a declarant?
No, I think if you would like, we can pursue from Mr. Reynolds an assignment of those rights that he reserved and still has. Otherwise, any sale will need to come back before the land bank to be approved, the contract. If there's a desire to pre-approve a contract, we could certainly build that, but after seeing the declarations and realizing those somewhat already addressed some of the building requirements, we wanted to confirm that you wanted still to have a pre-approved document for Mr. Marsh to go out and show people, or if it's more of a case by case, go out and market it. You can tell people this is generally what the city commission will do. And then just see the contract and approve it on a case by case basis.
My, my thinking is on those residential lots, we could have a, have a set or a pre-approved contract, but then on the commercial lot, we're probably going to want to look at that.
Yep, that's, that's my, yeah, what we discussed about re-amortizing over thirty years. Sale price seventy five hundred, twenty five hundred dollar rebate with CEO issued. That's all applicable to any of the residential lots that the city owns. And then this commercial lot is a different beast that
Once we
I mean, re-amortizing that one also makes sense.
Right.
But when it comes to sale price and things like that, I, I don't have a good feel on what that should be.
And once we have an assignment of those rights, we as we we could then start the rezoning process on that commercial lot because in the covenants, it states that it can be used as commercial if it's rezoned. I think it makes the most sense.
I think my choice, if it were up to me independently, would be to just remove that parcel from the subdivision. I mean, it's kind of, it's distinct, I feel like, from that.
Right.
And then essentially making it not subject to those covenants.
Yep.
Okay, we could do that once we are the declarant.
Yeah, and to the point of, I like what the residential lots of having the preset agreement because just the narrative I heard of why property with all the various reasons of why property didn't move out at the formerly known Highlands was because the city didn't have a set thing and it was all a bunch of confusion about what the city would do about it versus having the set document approved by the city commission goes, this is what the city will do. And makes it very clear.
Right. And then it starts the process of allowing us to market and sell that.
Right.
Commercial, residential, hopefully future commercial lot.
So I'm here, you want us to start the, the process of re-amort, amortizing those lots? Okay.
Well, so just so I'm clear, those, we're not re-amortizing the debt. The debt's, I mean, we're still essentially cash flowing that, right? But it's the, what the owner will pay going forward. There's no real, the debt is already owned by the city.
Yeah, I, re-amortizing the special assessments, I believe, is what we would be doing.
Yeah, I think in real terms, this debt's almost paid off.
Yep. So the specials will just be stretched out and repaid over the new thirty year period. I suppose the question is, do we do that? Do we re-amortize at the time of the sale so that we don't hold them for hopefully they are sold quickly, but that'll take an ordinance and I suppose we could do it immediately or we could wait until we have an actual sale in place and then start the new amortization clock at that point.
Again, this is kind of getting into the weeds, but are the owners of those bonds sensitive to that payment? Or is the city just paying whatever was obligated on that bond?
I believe it's the latter. I
So if they said you owe a million dollars a year, we're paying a million dollars a year? It's not a million dollars a year?
We're obligated to repay the bonds regardless of whether special assessments are actually paid and we have been doing that, but.
That would be a great clarification to include. And the next time this comes before the commission is the way I understand it is the fact that these specials haven't been coming in. City, you guys still obligated to pay that debt. And so the funds for paying that have just come from general ad valorem tax. So what I would assume is then the specials start getting paid, even though the debt's been paid off, that money then goes into general fund. I would think that because then that's what's been paying for it.
Well, again, part of this is just my experience with the Highlands, right? So we had to the Highlands did not generate any revenue to pay off their bond, so we had to raise taxes to pay off those bonds.
Yep.
That was my assumption. I'm not sure if that's correct or not.
I believe it is. We'll confirm that.
But as far as, there's not really a refinance that needs to happen. It's essentially just a a note that's placed on that and it becomes due at the time and the rate that we, that we agree upon as soon as it transfers.
Recasting a
Again, I don't want to get too much into weeds, but we're going to have to do something. Otherwise, the county is going to bill them every month, every year for that, the amount due. So we'll have to, there is some legal work that will have to be done, I think, to ensure that they're not billed the six hundred dollars of whatever it is. You know, it's not six hundred a month. It's maybe three hundred dollars a month and specials on those on those lots. Because right now it's, the county is, well, that's, it's all done through the county on the tax, on the tax bill. So there is going to be a process. I just want, this is just something we can go in and go, oh, we're just going to charge it for thirty years, a hundred dollars a month for thirty years until it's paid off. I mean, there's going to have to be some type of, of, of legal action through the county to ensure that they're not billed what is currently being billed for, on their taxes for those specials, if that makes sense.
Right. Yeah, that, that payment is reduced and then spread out over a longer period.
I'm not arguing that. I, I agree. I mean, I'll, we'll do whatever you guys want to do. I'm not arguing that. I just want to make sure we, it's not just a snap our fingers and we can make it happen. I mean, it's going to take a process.
Right.
Okay.
And I, sorry, I do certify the specials every year, so it's not just a set amount. I certify them in August. But I don't know what the legal ramifications are of whether we can stretch it out over a certain amount of time or not with the county, so.
We just need to understand that process. I just, just for reference here, I pulled up a, what I believe is one of the duplexes and then one of the homes. And there are the two specials, as mentioned. The street assessments are about seven, sixteen fifty a year currently. And then the sewer is about a hundred and fifty. And I, on one of those smaller lots, the duplex lots, it's a little bit less than that. Actually, those have been paid off. That's why that looks funny. Okay. But any, in any event, I think if we're talking annual, right, we're talking six hundred dollars a year or fifty dollars a month or the, the twenty thousand or whatever it would be.
Sounds good. So it sounds like three, three main takeaways. Was land bank assuming the role as declarant, re-amortizing to the thirty year and figuring out what that'll but what technically looks like to make sure the county bills the proper amount. And then third is having this development agreement as a similar thing to what is at a Golden Belt reflecting a seventy five hundred dollar sales price for the residential lots, twenty five hundred dollar rebate. I think that was done through the development agreements. We're just reflecting what we do.
The lot sale agreement or whatever we call it.
Yeah, yep. Yep, those three things. Cool.
Clear as mud.
You want to send those CCRs out to everybody if you haven't already?
Sure.
For reference.
Okay, do we have any further questions, comments, discussion on that item? I consider motion adjourned.
On second.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing now, we're going to call vote. Vice Mayor Miller.
He's muted, but she said yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Sorry, thank you. Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Goloff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned.